This regular council meeting on the third of August at 7:00 PM. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Nick, would you call roll please?
Councilmember Clark, Reed, Baller, Pfizer, Williamson, and Mayor Atchison.
First item is the agenda. Change to the agenda. And that is item B where it says grants for improvements in Victory Park. That should say grants for improvements in parks or city parks. It's not just unique to Victory Park, so. Request that one change. Any other corrections or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve it with the one change? Support. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, agenda is approved. First presentation, has Mr. Barnes joined us yet?
Yes, he's on.
Okay. So, Mr. Barnes, thank you for joining us this evening. And we'll turn it over to you to talk to us about youth sports and development activities.
Well, can everyone hear me okay? Am my sound coming through?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, okay. I couldn't tell. I thought I had my video on, but I guess that's not on either, so just wanted to make sure. Thank you for this opportunity to make this presentation and hopefully all of you will find this somewhat enlightening and hopefully at the end of it, we'll be able to come up with some conclusions and decisions. But first of all, let me say that I run a program called Playwright Basketball Academy and the program is steered towards helping youth, particularly in sports, not just basketball. Right now, we're actually teaching because of COVID helped us be more creative and do other sports. So, we're doing golf as of right now and we're gonna, we hope to do tennis in another week or so from now. We also want to try to get around to teaching youth and encouraging T-ball because of the history of T-ball having its origin of Albion, Michigan. So, there's a number of things that we're hoping to do in spite of COVID being that we can't do all the things that we would like to do inside. And we still will hope to do some basketball even on the outdoors, but that's going to require the realms put back on, back in place around the city, not just at Victory Park. But one of the things that I noticed is that we were trying to introduce tennis as an alternative for our youth and no tennis courts were available other than what's on the Albion College campus. As a result, I'm trying to find another place and Victory Park is the only park that could accommodate, but the tennis courts and basketball court there is in bad shape. And I was able to get a company to come in and give me some ideas as to what it might cost to repair that area. And I don't know how much of this information has been shared. Should I go through this? This is just an estimate, but not necessarily a quote. Should I go over that or should I just kind of leave that for later?
I believe the estimates is included in with Councilman's or Mayor Pro Tem Williams' write-up.
Okay.
So, we have that in front of us.
Okay, great. Well, then I'll be real, I'll go through it briefly just to make sure we're all on the same page. The tennis court area really needs to, the cracks in the court surface needs to be repaired. So, all of that with the estimated costs and relining and putting in a new tennis court nets and poles and things of that nature. That's an estimated cost of $5,950 just for the two courts alone. So, and that would again require repainting the courts after you filled in the cracks and try to put it, put some new rails on the end because they're so rusted. They probably wouldn't hold quality nets that were put on there. So, that total, that's the total estimate of what that might cost. With the basketball court, that area, there's two half courts that really the area need to be again filled in with the cracks being filled and also the area around the court being resurfaced so that kids could actually play on that court and put lines accordingly so that we could have some instruction. And I know there's been some concerns about too large a gatherings, but with those half courts, it's ideal for teaching and instructing as well as, you know, fun games that wouldn't necessarily require or really encourage large gatherings, so to speak. So, I feel like that two, those two areas would be very instrumental in allowing us to do more things outdoors with the youth here in the city and I'm hoping to promote just the opportunity to do more things around the city and not just at Victory Park.
Questions? Council have questions, Councilman Clark?
So, have you investigated other avenues to get funding for the, for this part?
No, I haven't had the opportunity yet, but I intend to try to get other funding for, because there's other things that needs to be done out there at Victory Park, I think, in terms of restrooms cleaned and probably in some shape or form made more operable or usable by kids along with the, the, what used to be a ice skating area there over the pavilion. I would like, I have a proposal to try to get funding for that because that would be a major, major project. But I believe that that area could be more utilized for opportunities for various sport activities. So, but that's a bigger project that I would like to try to pursue either grants and/or fundraising activities.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions by council? Thank you, Mr. Barnes, appreciate your time, appreciate your effort.
Thank you, appreciate it and hopefully we can get something done here pretty soon. Thank you.
Next up is public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening?
At this time, I do not see any.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to consent counter, items on the consent counter voted on as one unit. We have two items. There are the regular session minutes from the 20th of July and the special session minutes from the 28th of July. May I have a motion to remove the consent counter?
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, they're approved. Okay, items for individual discussion. Mechanical amusement device license for Cascarelli's. This is for, have we been asked to approve this or just discuss it? Mr. Domingo, have we been asked to approve something or just discuss this or do you know? Okay, so if I get a motion to approve this and second, then we'll have a discussion and that's the same question I have. Okay, the move, is there support? Okay, so first question, and I think your answer was no, has not yet been paid.
I was advised, I was advised, I'm sorry. I spoke with our finance director yesterday today and he told me that the applicant is still in default to the city.
Okay. So, this was previously disapproved or not approved, same thing, because of being in default to the city. The individual is still in default to the city. Any further discussion? Okay, so this was disapproved previously because the individual is in default to the city. Still on default to the city, we're being asked to approve it. I think related to this, but not specifically permits for this. Did the city get a correspondence from Mr. Cascarelli requesting his sidewalk assessments be applied to whatever he owes the city? You remember seeing anything like that? Oh, okay. All right, I don't know if applied this, okay. So, there's a single further discussion. Mr. Domingo, would you call the roll? If you vote affirmative or if you vote yes, that would be to approve this. If you vote no, that would be to not approve it. Yes.
Councilmember Clark, Reed, Smith.
No.
Baller.
No.
Williamson.
No.
And Mayor Atchison.
No.
Item. Discussion of city code enforcement priorities and introduction of the new city of Albion Code Enforcement Officer. City manager. I see Mr. Tracy is with us, so whatever, however you wish to do this.
I'm not sure who asked to have this item on the agenda, so I don't know if you had any concerns or anything that you'd like to share this kind of start of conversation.
Okay, I'm happy to know that the Code Enforcement Officer has been out and about and doing some things, although it ruffled some feathers with some of the people in the community because the accusations that were brought to me was the things that were ticketed or brought forth were minor things, some even in the backyard of a residence, nothing that could be visibly seen from the street. And then the properties that we currently have under our possession have not been taken care of. So, it kind of brought a bitter taste to how are you going to recommend this regular people when you're not even taking care of your own city business? So, I thought I'm bringing that forward because that's what was brought to me.
Director Tracy is with us, I'll give him an opportunity to share what's been going on in the Code Enforcement Office and then I will follow up after that.
Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, new Code Enforcement Officer has been out. There's been some cases where she has written things up in the backyard at, and that's regarding complaints that's been received from those individuals that live next to those properties. One of them happens to be swimming pool full of trees and such. There's several others. So, if it's something that's been behind the house, it's because a neighboring property has complained about it and that's why the Code Enforcement Officer has seen it in the back. Let me back up just a second. Elizabeth Loomis is our new Code Enforcement Officer. For those of you that may not know that, she is a resident of Albion and has been for some time. So, but back to Code Enforcement, as far as we've had her out, I've been out with her training last week and this week she's sat out writing up violations and following up on complaints and such. So, as far as the city property, I know that there's a number of pieces that are behind. We are actually going to have some of that cut here probably within the next couple of days also. So, we have a contractor that's going to be helping out, knocking some of that out. Some of the right of ways and also some property that the city has. Unfortunately, the city has not been able to take care of which is really no excuse, but I know they have a problem with some of their equipment that we found. So, I'll be getting that taken care of too.
Okay, thank you.
I hope you understood him because I couldn't.
I just would like to kind of follow up to what Director Tracy said. We have a new Code Enforcement Officer and she has been out enforcing the code. And I know that has been a big issue for council to go out and take care of the issues that we have seen. But I think we just, we need to start being across the board. And I look before I am acting city manager, so I will take the responsibility for the city properties. And I'm in the process of working with my team to get those addressed. But as far as Code Enforcement, we have to, our products with issues like these too, we have to make sure that we're not picking when we want to, and we need to. So, I think moving forward, we are working really hard to be fair and consistent.
Okay, so Councilman Reed has been really adamant about her property across from her. Do you know if any movement has went forward to her? Because I've physically watched and looked at that and.
It was cited yet, either yesterday or today it was cited.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you know if the prospect work has the precinct or has the owner been contacted? Colin, I think I sent the email out and responded to it a little bit about, it might have been a few things in that email. But one of them was the, I think it was 809 Prospect Street and a tree had fell on the house and there's rodents in there and the grass was hot. So, I was told that that property was for, was still under the owner's possession. So, I was just wondering if we could contact that property owner and say, hey, do something if you don't mind.
Yep, I'm not aware, but I will touch base with Director Tracy and we'll look into it.
Hello?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I do appreciate what Ms. Clark is saying that, you know, that we all have people in our area who are starting to get the citations and things. But for a number of months, this is what council has been asking for. And as Ms. Snyder has pointed out, fairness across the board. And so, I personally applaud the new Code Enforcement Lady if she's out there doing the job. I certainly wouldn't want to do it, but I appreciate her being able to go out and do it. So, I think we're on the right track with this. Thank you, I yield.
If Shane's talking, you're not, you're muted.
Sorry, I was muted, but I know everyone heard me because I'm loud. I would, I think this is a great opportunity for that to begin to kind of think about how do we, what's top priority, you know? That way we can start to employ a strategy that makes sense for the city and take care of some of the really blighted stuff. I think tall grass, and that's easy. We can do that for an afternoon on Friday and go cite a bunch of homes, but the harder stuff is really reaching in and saying you have a hole in your roof, you have blatant electrical issues on the outside of your home, your paint's chipping and there's probably lead in it. How do, and those are the more difficult ones. I recognize it's probably a little more costly for the city, but that's, but now's the time to really think about how we're going to do that. So, I just wanted to add that encouragement to acting city manager Snyder and to the Code Enforcement Team.
So, my comment would be, I feel what Councilman Smith said and Mayor Pro Tem. And I appreciate the hard work that. One thing that I've noticed or read online. Done with the Code Enforcement and the cooperate. Just what I've found online, very sensitive, muted, okay, thank you. Nope. Okay. Many cities put out a Code Enforcement handbook, what the priorities are in the city. That's kind of a living document that evolves over time. I'll send you a couple of examples for you to consider whether that would be one way to let the community know we're going to focus on these things as opposed to wherever we see, we're going to ticket if we see it. But again, it's up to you and I'm not trying to tell you how to manage that. But I also could understand the frustration from people going, when's the city going to fix theirs? Well, I have confidence under Ms. Snyder's leadership that the city will be making great strides forward in that area. Do you have anything you want to add or? The council member comments?
Sure, I brought this, I was listening to the floor mainly because of some programming opportunities that could take place in the park as we're explaining in the presentations, being of the discussion. These are relatively cheap fixes to create more outdoor space for programs and activities for all. So, I am generally in support of this particular resolution, which is I brought it. And as you can see, there's a contingency of 1325, which represents just over 10% of projects. It allows for things go over, price changes in between. So, I just, I wanted you to know that contingency, you could actually save money, but there's been a built-in to make it a round number. So, with that, I yield.
Thank you, Mayor. Once I saw this come up on the agenda, I actually took the opportunity to drive over to Victory Park today and walk through the basketball courts, the tennis courts. And I don't know, pickleball, it looked more like a volleyball court to me, but okay, who am I? But the, I'm not sure the figures here are enough to fix the damage that I saw. The tennis court itself has one probably four inch wide split running all the way across the courts. That's going to be an expensive fix. I'm not saying don't do it. Let's bring the recreation back down. Yes, and I believe the funds are there in the Recreation Division budget. But I would like to see the city follow the bid process to get other contractors to come in and look at this by our charter. There is a bid process in place. We need to follow the charter. And yes, let's, let's do it expeditiously, but it would be a good thing, but there are other things that I hope get addressed as well over there. There are some fencing issues and there's a beautiful oak tree that's hanging over part of one of the basketball courts. It should be trimmed back a bit, but I'm sure that that could all be worked into it. But this may be a bit conservative on the money is what I'm saying. We may have to look, you know, with other bids into a little more money and I'm not opposed to that. I yield.
Anyway, I did ask Mr. Barnes to see if he could get somebody local to give us a quote just so we'd have a starting point. What I would propose that council do, and I absolutely agree, they need to be bid competitively bid. And if you have seen something that the folks that bid on it, and it was probably just an off the cuff, hey, it's a bunch, we took a look at it and it would be, if it's going to be more money, obviously you need to know that. I would suggest that similar to what we did with the youth camps with the YMCA, which was made a commitment that the council would allocate or fund up to a certain dollar value and then get the bids and see how quickly we can get the work done and what it's going to cost and to see what is the best value. I think the tennis courts, there are no public tennis courts in the city of Albion except the ones in Victory Park and they have definitely fell into disarray. Tennis is an outdoor activity that you actually can practice on your own, but two people can play tennis. So, it lends itself to families and people going out and getting exercise into fresh air, which is important even more so now under the COVID. Plus, if we have courts that are functional and useful, then we can have youth tennis and we can't have a tennis league and we can't have tennis tournaments. All of those things that the Recreation Department can organize. I've been asked a questions, well, it's in a park, why would you spend recreation programming money to make this repair? And I've said two things. I'm not hard over that it has to come from the recreation budget. There's, I don't know what's in the parks budget. I would say that if the council agrees and we pass this resolution, that we leave it up to the city manager, working with the head of parks, head of recreation and the city treasurer to find out the best method for the city's budget. The recreation opportunities, this is kind of a, something that suits all ages, all genders and a whole variety of physical capability levels. There is a chart in the five-year, master five-year Parks and Recreation Plan that talks about as a table, this is okay if you have a city with this much population. Here's the standard. here's the standard recreation options that your city should have. It's not regulatory, it's not a requirement. Tennis is listed and I think based on our population of 8,500 people, that comes out to 1.82 tennis courts. Soccer fields, 20,000 and above. So I mean, it's, it's a lot of good useful information, but tennis isn't there. There is somewhat of a history with tennis in the city. Used to have tennis courts in Holland Park. We do have tennis courts in Victory Park. Fixing those courts is cheaper than building new ones. So I strongly support that. The, the T-ball diamond that's adjacent to the tennis courts and the basketball courts. I would, would dearly love to see that put back in with striping and, and put back into use. And I, I can't tell you what that would cost. It doesn't seem like it would be a tremendous amount. Pickleball, you were right, Councilman Williamson, or I'm sorry, Smith, that was, what you saw was a volleyball court. Pickleball is something that's catching on and it's become popular. You either go to Battle Creek or you go to Jackson to play. And we do have people in this city that go both of those locations. And I think what it would involve, once the court was repaired, is putting the striping down. I think $10,000, the city can afford that. It creates recreation opportunities, recreation resources. And then our recreation department can organize things. With, with T-ball, I think that's a fantastic thing, particularly with the city's history. What makes that a little bit more difficult is then you have to have, you have to organize it with coaches. You have to have a certain number of players. And so the tennis is a lot easier to use. I yield to Councilman Lawler and then the Mayor Protem.
I would have to look into that, but I just, I want to remind council that our recreation fund is funded by a village. And those village dollars are to be used for programming. And I know these improvements would provide an opportunity to create new programs, but we cannot use the recreation fund for the capital improvements and maintenance of that. I have talked with our finance director to confirm that. And those village funds can only be used for programming. So once, I, I agree with everyone, we do need to make these improvements in our park areas, but we would have to look at utilizing either the general fund balance to use that.
Mayor Protem. I think, I think what I'm built to do, and so I'm going to be the first one to say it. I think I might have supplemented a little bit and said, hey, fix up this tennis court, fix up this football court. What if, what, if you were to approve this, that's fine. I think you could, if you should, you know, let's say you pay $10,000 for its park, park repairs. That allows more programming. But what if we add as a, not, you know, a, an additional clause below the now there for beer, maybe we, maybe we take that policy action, just to be, be, again, just like bring forward a couple of different options, not just in the parks and the parks for us. Let's give the acting city manager, just give them the opportunity to say, okay, this is most of the classes that I have taught for us. This was in the process of it, pickleball, T-ball, all then, and then you look at the capital, the master plan. And here are a couple of things you can do to make sure we're having the max impact. And whether it's 10 or 30,000, you have the opportunity to decide where it's going to come from and make that decision. And then the other pieces are coming up on budget season, October is when we really should start. It has assistance to your concern, I have to do it, so if we make this a priority, I know, I know the intention is to do a quick fix to get programming done. I still kind of want to select patterns for the tennis and the basketball program. The team, I think we add an additional clause and bring back, here are the, here are the additional products I think you need that accomplish, knowing that we're going to be, this year COVID situation for a long time. And we have for a while. And then they got to the next company, you know, the business company, is that something that I always do? I can't remember if I mentioned in my own resolution, so I'm going to allow someone else to make that back.
And the advantage of doing that as opposed to simply tailing this resolution and wait until the city manager comes back with.
We can, we do have three portable basketball hoops that we could allow Play Ride Academy to use. They could put them up in the large park pavilion and take them down when they are not, no longer needed. So we do have that option to provide for the meantime until we have the repairs done.
So I'll make that amendment to add the language to pass the city manager to come back with proposals with accurate amounts, what it would cost to fix a variety of things with your recommendation. Is there support for that amendment? Any further discussion on that amendment, Councilman Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to be sure that's understood that I do applaud this. I am so a hundred percent behind this. The idea of bringing our parks back has been a dream of mine for, ever since I moved back into Albion here. And I think this is just our first of many steps forward. And I will throw this program all the way through. Thank you.
Ask Mr. [inaudible]. Amendment to the resolution. Mr. Make it, please read the role.
Yes. Yes.
Lawler. Spicer. Williamson.
Yes.
Bar. And Mary Atchison.
Amendment passes. As amended. This.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yeah.
Bar. Snap.
Yes.
And Mary Atchison.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Next, I think is the grants in the parks. Okay, this is a discussion only, and this is about grants for renovations and improvements that we're talking about here. This is, what I would like to do is, I'm not sure what the city manager's plan is for addressing. You've already stepped in and now we have a code enforcement officer as you're coming in. One of the other things that probably had just any comment to have somebody identified, designated, qualified, skilled in writing grants. And so I'm not that person, but I'm going to research some grants specific to, that could be used to enhance and improve and restore our parks. When you figure out what your solution to that is, I think everybody will be very happy. What, part of this process or grants for the renovation improvements, what really needs to happen at the city level is we need to get our five year plan, master plan for parks and recreation updated. We do have an established, it is not fully staffed. And reading through that five year master plan, that was one of the preliminary steps in updating it last. Was to have a citizens advisory committee. And so I would put out an extra plea, if you have people in your, your constituents, please have them contact me and we will get that commission staffed, appointed and confirmed by council. And that would be one of the first things that they would begin to work on. It takes a bit of time to do it right. And you serve, it's, you know, we'll need to go through and survey all the, all the parks, the current condition. The current master plan has a good description of what the process they followed. So there's a couple of potential discussion points of how many parks is the right number of parks? And how do we sustain whatever we have? And there's various solutions to that. One of the solutions would be everybody play the Lotto and if we win, then we have money to sustain. It's not very realistic. One of the recommendations in the last five year plan was to encourage civic organizations to adopt a park. Certain things and we just passed by ordinance, the community partnership program. So we could encourage that. And then another option would be to have a, a serious discussion. What can the city afford to sustain? That could be shifted to more of a green space or something else. All of those things is the parks and recreation advisory committee can make recommendations on. Well, I'm going to start working on finding grants and whatnot. So all of these things that people have interest in the parks, the, will need to get that committee. I'm asking all my colleagues on council to encourage people to apply to be on that commission. We can get that going. We have a couple of people on there. And I spoke with Elijah Armstrong Jr. asking him, and he's willing to. But we still have another four spots to fill. So Mayor Protem.
Something I want to add to this discussion that I think it's my belief, so we can have as many parks and as many playgrounds and many splash pads and slides as you could possibly hold a city with if we really wanted to. And one of the things I think we need to think about as the, as this commission is rolling is that the success of any part of the album has always been not given commission or appointed officials to be, because citizens got together and made a happen. And so, I mean, in any park, in a second, generally, generally has a maintenance fund associated with it. And it has a local community foundation. And so one of the, one of the things that this mission is a work and think about is if we're going to there's been some bumping without putting in some play equipment, it'll really, that's what our, that can touch our increases. There's nothing that's got a mobility and anxiety and electricity. And if you go over there, right here, Saturday night, you can see a ton of children. And probably, you know, and it could be full to numbers and census day, we can probably find that there are more children per, per household or block in that neighborhood than there are at PC six or PC five. And so if even, if this mission works, make sure that all the kids navigate that access to wonderful place, a wonderful structure that is the same or even better than what is for Victory Park. They would want to make sure that part of the plan and strategy is to make sure there's a fund to give. Because one of the reasons some nights at Victory Park is that the city can say, hey, I need to take my, my, my expendable, I'll do that. I'm sorry, but the literature just doesn't fix facts or repair it. And so we need to think about that, I think, going forward. And I also would like to say, in addition to your committee members, because I know there's a number of people who will sit on a committee, that committee or commission needs to engage with people outside of themselves to pull in the gap. The real, some of our treasurer in the album, they don't want to serve on a commission. They don't want to be appointed to official seat. They say, let me just write a bunch of grants and run around a pulp sign on my, on my shirt. $120,000, I'll separate, you know, the public, the pulp sign. And so I hear kind of rules to the commission and allow them to engage across, you may not even be able to sit on that commission. Either they're only catch time medicines or we're going through something that precludes them actually being on that. So I think if we're really thoughtful about the parks, we need to make sure we're being as inclusive as possible and not letting the rules get in the way of progress, especially in general.
When you have the opportunity, take the opportunity to take a quick look, a read through of that master plan because it describes that the process they use to accomplish exactly what you're saying, engaging the community. And really emphasize, I mean, I don't agree that we can have as many parks and as, as whatever and splash pads as the community wants because then there is no contingency and there's no firm commitment and resources to maintain them. And the will, whatever the internal process is, otherwise we wouldn't be sitting here talking about fixing tennis courts. Haven't had any maintenance.
I think that's great. I think that whatever we can afford to sustain, that's great.
That's great.
I don't think it makes sense to have lots of stuff that's not even maintaining equipped properly.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, I actually did say that. So when you talk about a maintenance fund, that's exactly what the parks have that are being well maintained right now. So like I said, Victory Park has a fund specifically sitting there just earning money every year that the city is able to then say, hey, I need this spendable money so I can take care of this, this play structure at Victory Park. So, and so that's why, that's why I actually have added to this conversation is that if we build a brand new play structure or bland, brandy splash pad somewhere in Albion, you associate a, a fund that allows for the perpetual maintenance of that. Victory Park, the, that would, beautiful play structure will always be maintained and cared for because of that fund. Because it pays to do that. So that's something that cities and communities all over have taken advantage of. So that I'm just advocating that if we move forward, that we really need to think about the maintenance fund to make sure we fund it up so that they can be taken care of forever.
The community foundation, does that cover just that place trajectory or does it go to Victory Park?
It's just for that installation. It's not for the, that's why the tennis courts, I mean, if the tennis courts had a maintenance fund, then they'd be taken care of too, but they didn't. So as we rebuild and rethink those things, I think we can do that. I'm excited for more parks in Albion and I think there, there's some, even though we say we have more parks than what we need, when you go around to some of those parks, they're not really what you would consider a park. Macintosh Park is a big green area that we mow with, with a pavilion that nobody uses. So is that a park? I don't know. So that's what I'm adding.
So I'm not indicating, actually, no, I'm indicating that based on the way they are not properly maintained and the constant, one of the explanations, not excuse it, but one of the explanations is we're resource limited as far as money and people. And so my point is, is that going to change? And if it, if it does, and then we have more resources, more people to properly maintain the parks, great. But if revenue streams aren't going to go up appreciably, we're not going to hire more people to do the maintenance. We have to find some other way to maintain them. Or have the hard discussion, do we continue to have a park that's not maintained, not properly equipped, so that we can say we have a park? But that's a discussion for a separate thing. Any other comments by council? Mayor Protem.
I also, I also want to add that we were left out of funding for the trails this year because our park plan wasn't submitted to the Michigan Trailway Alliance in February. And that represents hundreds of thousands of dollars that could be utilized for things like, I'm going to be really specific to PC six, but there are a couple of trailheads that meet there and that money could refurbish the.
and that money could refurbish those bathrooms and provide shower space for people who travel on those trails, which would inevitably provide better quality bathrooms and spaces for the people who use those parks. So, and that's all, there's several places all over the community we could benefit from that. But because we didn't submit that this year, we were left out of this year's funding cycle. So, hopefully the commission will get together and get their plan in place so that, you know, February of 21, we can submit that and be in compliance, be able to receive funding. So, that, again, had nothing to do with acting, city manager Snyder, and everything to do with other forces that work at the city, so.
And the plan was still current. So it could have been, it just wasn't currently. Okay, so, item E was placed on the agenda at the request of Councilwoman Reed. So Councilwoman Reed called privileged because she, because of your infection and can't hear. So, I'll let you start off.
Okay, thank you. I'm here with Councilmember Reed's report. In fourth precinct, we are ready to.
In fourth precinct, we're having a lot of the same problems as far as the cats taking over costumes, mating in people's yards. And the reason why I brought that up because the house that I just was talking about on Prospect, it is abandoned and is right in back of this lady's house. So I know her property is in good shape, but the property behind her is not. So, she was asking me, could we possibly get grass mowed around town since we were, we are fully staffed? Something I didn't know. But since they've brought some additions, since we're fully staffed, can we get information on houses that need their grass cut? If we are responsible for it? If we are not, can we contact homeowners? And the fourth precinct is also asking for a call to check into animal control for our cities. I think our cats and other rodents are taking over. Maybe they're sick, maybe they're hungry, I don't know. But my precinct is calling for animal control or discussion maybe, as we can, and see how that works out for all of us. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Any other comments by council? Councilwoman Clark.
I did, I did talk with the land bank today because I wanted to know some information concerning houses that we were responsible for and the ones that they're responsible for currently. They only have three, three buildings that they're responsible for and two more possible that will be turned over. I do understand that the people have been out and doing their investigation of the properties and making their assessments and that some more information will be presented by the end of this month and that it could increase. So thanks that, that means that some of these properties are either owned by a bank or owned for taxes and, or just in the middle of the whole process of how it takes. She explained to me how long it takes. I spoke to our attorney tonight about some things that maybe we should be looking at in the future, in the future to stop this type of thing. He's gonna do some investigation for me and for everybody else to know what it was. I asked him if we know that a house is abandoned and it's up for taxes, what can we do moving forward as a city? So, one, to keep it up and keep the house from falling apart because if it's not properly closed or protected, that's why we've lost so many properties in this city because they've sat for so long. And by the time we get a hold of them, they're no longer functionable and it costs too much money to fix. So, city attorney told me that he would get me some information for that. Because, just like we just tore that building down, and I had mentioned before in a, in a meeting, maybe three or four meetings ago, about when they tore the building down, that we were gonna see cats and rats and rats coming from there. And now that's what we're seeing. And a lot of the people in the city are starting to have that complaint. So, and, you know, just moving forward, what I would like to see is, once the city attorney has got us that information, if we can put something in place. So if it's abandoned, then the city can take some type of for the possession of that property and, and, and stop those types of things happening. So when the city bank gets the property, then maybe we can do more with it.
Information has been brought forward before. There is a group in Albion, self-funded, no outside funding, no government backing, nothing. They are a self-funded group called Albion's Friends of Animals. They are what is called a TNR group. They trap, they neuter, they release cats. Now, they had a standing colony at Union Steel to keep the rodent problem down. When Union Steel was about to be torn down, they went in, they removed the colony. All other cats in that area and in precinct four and all around there, those are all cats that belong to residents or cats that have been thrown out by residents. They are cats that have never been spayed or neutered by residents. The residents don't care what they do with those cats. And cats are just like any other animal. If you don't spay or neuter them, they are going to multiply. And they will multiply in great numbers. So, it's, it's not the fault of groups who are trying to do it under their own dollar. The fault of all the cats is the residents. And they have to take that responsibility upon themselves. I yield.
Everyone's muted, nobody can hear you.
We get that because we feel like that the friends of the cats, they have done their job and they have got their cats up out of there. So, we are aware of that. But it's, hopefully, on agenda items, I'll be able to bring up animal control and we can take it from there to see how, what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate that, Councilwoman Lawler. Animals are the, if someone has trouble getting their cats spayed or neutered, give them a call. They are more than happy to help someone get a discounted appointment at a veterinarian that they deal with normally. The elderly, they will, you know, if it's possible, if it's in the budget or if someone's willing to kick in the money, they will get the cat fixed for free. Not all the time, but whenever possible. And usually, it has to be funded by someone else. I'm sorry if I sound a little peeved, I'm really not. It's just that my wife is a member of that group. We have our own colony down on Adams Street that we maintain. But again, every cat that comes to us, we make sure they are healthy. They are not carrying feline leukemia or the feline version of parvo or anything like that. They're all rabies checked and they're all spayed or neutered and get their first round of shots. And this is what Friends of Albion's Animal will provide. But as I said, they are a self-funded group, so. All donations aren't cheerfully accepted. But, you know, they're more than willing to help. But we, we need help from the residents as well, if that makes sense. Thank you very much, I yield.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 202044, a resolution to authorize the city manager, interim city manager, or acting city manager as the authorized signer of grant documents for the Urban Avenue Reconstruction Project. So moved. Okay, any discussion? Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. By all means, please, people into the neck of the job. It's a beautiful street now. The gutters are wonderful. It's, it's absolutely wonderful driving out through there. The approach is side streets, so it's called gutters. Sinage is up. Two things I would like to address. Two things I would like to address in the future. They have thirty-five mile an hour speed limit signs all the way down the street in the residential area. I and my constituents believe that should be dropped to twenty-five in the residential area because of the children. And there are many, many children that live on Irwin Avenue. And also, I would, in the future, I will I know we can do speed bumps, but maybe rumble strips or something in two to three different locations on the road to help slow down the speeders. Because being one, one nice, long, straight strip of pavement, I tell you what, they're flying down. And again, it puts the children at risk. So, just for further, to future discussion, I yield.
So for the city attorney, what authorities the acting city manager not have, that the city manager have? Okay, so the reason we're doing this is because by name, Mr. McCarry had that? Or are we just clarifying that the acting city manager has the authority?
The current resolution that we have on file with, it only spells out the interim and city manager. So I was contacted by our grant administrator for this.
Okay.
And just, they just asked if you could update that to include all titles. So, whoever's in that position can sign off on the proper document.
Okay, so, I want to make sure I understand that. So our, I don't want to belabor this, but I want to make sure where our, when we have an acting city manager, they have full authority to act as the city manager, same thing for the interim. And they use discretion in that, of course. Okay, thank you. Seeing no further comments. Mr. Domingo, would you read the roll?
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Lawler. Williamson.
Yes.
Clark. And Mary Jefferson.
Yes. All right. Next is future agenda items. Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we take into possible animal control and how much is the process? Just for this question.
Is that something you would be ready to address next meeting? Or do you need, okay? So if you'd put that on the agenda and give us options. I know county does certain things, but what it is, I don't really know. Councilwoman Clark.
So, just like you were saying that there's beating down Irwin Avenue.
Just like you were saying, that they're beating down his street and Irwin Avenue and his precinct. It's seemingly being a problem all over the city. I had someone that mentioned that they called the police a couple of times, asked them to sit. So, I'd just like to have Officer Kip address that and where we're at with that. And, because I know we talked about time before doing something with Eden Street because of that problem, but it's essentially all over.
Okay. Councilman Smith, did you have future agenda items?
I did not.
Okay. One agenda item I had, and I'll probably think of more. But I've been a week now where I can barely get into my email. And once I open an email, I cannot get back to it and do anything with it. And so you've been very helpful. And I think there is a software issue or maybe the routers or the servers, or I don't know. If we could, you could come back and tell us next council meeting as, here's this, here's why we're having problems. Or, see, now we fixed it, we don't have any problems. And it may be premature, but at some point soon, please come back and tell us if we, if our servers and the software programs that we're using are adequate and sustainable. Okay. Turn it over to public comments, if we have any this evening.
Can you hear me? Hello? Hello?
Yes, sir, go ahead, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, okay. Garrett Brown, 1016 South Superior Street. A couple of things. So one, if I remember, if I recall, Irwin Ave is a major street. And so, I think that we might be, the city might be limited in its ability to control the speed limit there. So that's something that Attorney Harkness or Chief Kip can verify that. But I think there might be some restrictions on that street versus another local street where we probably could reduce the speed limit. And then, a reminder, and then also a concern. So, the council approved the declaring racism a public health emergency. And as part of that resolution, I think there was supposed to be a committee set up. So I haven't heard anything, I haven't seen that on the agenda. So hopefully that starts to take place. And then also, I saw this on the DDA. I know that was discussed there. And then I also know that the agenda for the EDC was released last season. And there's a potential, there's some discussion going on about combining the Economic Development Corporation Board, the Downtown Development Authority Board, and the Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce. And so I'm curious about, and I'll be in on the meeting on Thursday, but I'm curious about what that, what's entailed by that? Because I do remember at one time having a conversation with the city attorney about the difficulty of potentially combining those boards. Because they are, they are separate statutes and they have different requirements. So, I, I, I think that might come before council. It might have to come before council. But I would, I would suggest that the council members get some legal clarity about that from the attorney. Because I think that there's definitely some benefit to having different boards with different viewpoints and to consolidate, if that is even legally possible, that I think what it does is it kind of cramps out hearing a diverse set of voices when it comes to making decisions about how the city engages with economic development and what that looks like, right? So, you know, that's one of the concerns I used to raise when I was on council was that there was a potential conflict of interest when it came to the role of the current EDC president and the president having to wear two hats between a private entity and a public entity. But now it's gonna be a situation where there's also, there's gonna be a multitude of. there's also, there's going to be a multitude of hats, if that's even possible. So I think council really needs to be aware of that. Um, and request some, uh, you know, legal opinions and some information about what's being proposed. So, um, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Do we have any further public comments tonight?
All right, good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Well, good evening. Gary Tompkins, your county commissioner. Great to meet you folks this evening. Uh, I'll be very, very brief this evening, first and foremost, just a couple of items. Uh, as you, most of you are quite aware, the toll building in Bow Creek and the county building in Marshall are reopened to the public. Uh, if you do have business at either of the buildings, it's still important for you to call ahead, uh, for appointments, just in case, because some, uh, some of the offices are just taking appointments. And of course, when you do enter the buildings, there'll be a requirement of masks and social distancing. Uh, in our July eighteenth meeting, real quickly, we approved at a five to two vote to authorize placement of a telephone line surcharge to fund nine-one-one emergency dispatch services for a period of ten years and the maximum amount of three hours per line, which will be seen on the November twenty twenty ballot. So just some information for you folks as we come down, even though, as we all know, we have an election tomorrow, but there'll also be, uh, another ballot initiative, uh, on the November ballot. Our county commission meeting this Thursday will be again in virtual format via Zoom. Uh, my monthly newsletter, most of you folks do get it, but it's certainly available. Uh, if you'd like to email that, Tompkinscc7@gmail.com. Get yourself signed up. It's a great resource to know what's going on in and around the seventh district of Callan County. In this month's newsletter, I talk about, um, some of the, uh, I'm going to be, over the next few months, I'll be highlighting some of the committees that I am, I'm so fortunate to serve on. Uh, this month, I highlight the senior village allocation committee, which I'm certainly honored to chair. It's a thirteen-member committee, uh, from all areas of Callan County. And we are on the east side, very well represented, certainly in the, uh, in the Albion area. So, uh, we have a lot of, uh, certainly say what goes on with a lot of our senior dollars. That's a good thing. Uh, just wanted to, uh, and you'll be able to see that on my, uh, newsletter on page five, as we all know, for those of you that have not voted yet. You will see a, a number of issues on the ballot as far as ballot initiatives. First and foremost, speaking of the senior lodge, which is up for renewal for ten years with no increase in the village rate of point seventy-four-two-four. Uh, the Parks Village, which is a brand new village, has proposed rate of point two mills for five years. Uh, this village is approximately seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. Generation of three sixty-five going to Callan County and the other three hundred and sixty-five thousand going to townships and municipalities based on population. Algen, uh, if, if this village was to pass, Algen would see about twenty-three thousand dollars, uh, in revenue from that village. Uh, and then finally on page six, as you guys know, one of the best things that I love talking about is roads. Uh, on page six, I provide a recent report that was released from Colt Pilot, which were found that Michigan has the ninth worst roads in the nation. Well, that's a big surprise, right? No question about that. But the study doesn't account for rural local roads and local municipality streets, which are considerably worse. So really, we could go from ninth to probably second very quickly based on if we took a look at that. And then finally, as you guys always know, one of the things I'm always looking at is what is the state doing to address the problem? Latest thing that the state has come out is they, uh, there was a, uh, a bill that was put forth for this, to study toll roads. It's a two-year, uh, study, uh, with an unlimited, unknown amount of money that's going to be spent on it. Uh, it was signed and filed. And for the next two years, we're going to spend money on a toll, toll road study that, uh, really, for the most part, isn't going to produce any results. And as you folks know, it's not really going to do, what needs to do to really truly address the road situation we have. So I will continue with my road plan. As you guys always know, that's going to be continuation moving forward. And with that being said, see how quick I was this evening. It's always great to be with you folks each every month. And Shane, I do like your mask very much, sir. Uh, just so you know. Exactly. Absolutely. Look at that. Yes, sir. And so you guys have a great evening. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You also have an electronic copy of my city manager report in there. I have included just the COVID nineteen and reopening update. Um, I also provided you with our COVID, um, COVID reopening and preparedness plan for your review. That will be published on the city's website as well. City Hall will reopen to the public starting on Wednesday, August fifth, with the following limitations. Um, it will, all city hall staff will work for as normal from eight AM till five PM. However, we will only be open to the public from nine AM until four PM. So that gives our staff the time, an hour before we're open to the public to sanitize and prep what they need to do for the day and then close, organize and prep so they can leave the office on time by five. All guests will be required to wear a mask. There will also be a survey screening on the door. So if you are sick or have any, please come into city hall. It's, um, city hall will be limited to three people inside at one time. There are markings on there so you can keep your proper six feet distance. If the lobby is at capacity, we do ask that you wait outside until someone leaves out. If you need to handle your department outside of the front door, we'll need to schedule a department, an appointment with that. If they can or make payments online just to, um, avoid the spread of COVID nineteen. We had our Irwin Ave reconstruction final project, um, meeting. It was held on Friday, the July thirty-first. As Councilmember Smith said, that road looks awesome. They did a great job. Um, the final inspection will occur the week of August tenth. Sorry, these are not easy to speak with. Um, we had the pre-construction meeting for the North Clark Street, um, project last Wednesday. Um, construction is anticipated to begin today. That will include, um, tree removal and consumers have to relocate some holes. So they plan to do, um, do that for the next three to four weeks. Um, and then this week I will also start the collective, um, bargaining process with all, all of our unions.
So, um, I know you're adjusting your hours for a spent patient. Um, and I've been down in city hall before and seen the janitor that is down there. Is, or have you considered possibly adjusting that person's hours? So that they'll be in there when people are coming in and out so they can keep in front of them?
Yes, I will be having conversations with D and D, um, who is our provider for cleaning services.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, city manager. All right. Councilmember comments? Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have some things, uh, going on in my precinct, um, that I just want to share with the council. Um, I was out talking to, um, uh, elderly in my precinct by the name of Mrs. Llama. She's a retired Albion Public School bus driver. Um, and she resides on Roast Street. And she was out trying to get her, um, her porch fixed because the cement is broken. And, um, so what, what I'm trying to do is, um, reach out to anybody that can help me to, um, help Miss Llama and many other people in my precinct to help, um, get, get their property or something she really wanted. She walks on the corner, I do believe. So, um, I'd like to help her with that. Um, another concern that I have was, uh, a lady, uh, Mister and Mrs. Saldana. They live by Alvin College. And next to the freshman girl, Bigwell. Uh, he expressed to me that, um, the parking is majority all the way down the street. And, um, his neighbor had an emergency and the ambulance had to stop in the middle of the street because the cars were parked in front of their driveway. So he could not get, um, the neighbor could not get their car to the ambulance. And, um, so that's kind of a big, big issue for him. He is a lot upset about it. Um, and he said that he's, he's really unable to, to, um, get in his driveway also. So, um, I know there was something that was drawn up. Hopefully, to keep, know what I'm talking about, this had drafted something about, um, the cars being on the street at, on Bigwell. I don't know if they had, I can't remember if they had the right to go out or not. Or if they want to be, to be ticketed or, um, on the street overnight. Hopefully, um, I can get some clarification on that. I just want to express to the council that every thing is making a lot of great changes. Houses are being refurbished, guards are being mowed on a weekly basis. My days, I'm not a person star, everybody's star. A lot of people are rehabbing their houses, repairing their torches. So we just want to try to keep it nice and neat everything. And if anybody could go with any other things, that would be great. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Lawler, what was the, the gentlelady's name and her address with the, with the concrete?
Uh, Mrs. Llama. She stays on Monroe Street. I don't know her exact house number.
This is Lionel?
She's a retired school.
Okay. On Monroe Street?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments from council members? Okay, I have a couple of quick ones. One, tomorrow is the primary. So if you have an already voted absentee, please go turn out and vote. And, uh, recommend everybody vote for the senior village to renew that. Let's see. Her name has alluded me, but she runs the difference makers program during the summer. Do you remember what her name is? She lives in precinct three. At any rate, they have their graduation ceremony down at Dickory Park tomorrow. I'll be down there at eleven, uh, for that. And so if you have free time, it would be nice to show up and support the kids. Other than that, uh, no other comments? I'm glad everybody's wearing their mask. Please encourage everybody to wear your mask. It's important. And, uh, oh, yes, COVID nineteen testing. Okay, so the state with the governor's office, we're working with them. They're coming back for more COVID nineteen testing. This is going to be a walk-in testing for whoever wants to get tested. They're going to be here for six months. And they'll be testing in Albion three days a week. We have tentative days in schedule. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And when it all gels up, I'll put something out. What I'm, I reached out to our county commissioner earlier today. And then going to follow up with Representative Hasba, Senator Bison, and Callan County Health. Uh, in order to maximize the opportunity for people to participate in the testing and, uh, take advantage of that, we'll look to see if we can provide transportation with a bus route, van pickups or something. Uh, if it was just going to be for a weekend or a week, I'm sure we could figure out how to do that, but we're talking six months. Uh, and I was also talking with the county commissioner and making this available to, uh, Homer and the outlying townships that don't have that available to them. So, uh, encourage everybody to get tested. Yes, it's at the Washington Gardner School. I'm going to go over and, and look at the facility. It's the same area, same room, I think, that the college will be using on Tuesdays and Thursdays to do their testing. Uh, so we're, it's a little bit of economy to do it in the same location. And, uh, so basically if you get COVID testing in Albion, you can, Washington Gardner. So more information to follow on that. Councilwoman Lawler? No, it's free, free. If there are any other comments, city manager, you have any final comments? Okay. Motion to excuse Councilwoman Spife. We have a motion.
Support you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? She's a fuse. Mr. Domingo, would you do the roll call, please? No, just the roll call says on here, we're doing a roll call at the end of the meeting. I don't know why either. Okay, we will. Now I'm mad at you, juror. I didn't even cheat anybody out of anything. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Good night.
Thank you.